Good evening, I'd like to call the Monday, February 3rd, 2020 Board of Selectments meeting and call it to order. The first thing we have on the agenda is to go into executive session. So, I would need a motion to go into executive session for 21A3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the public employees union link, local 1144 Laiona Town Hall Bargaining Unit because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares. 21A3, second reason to go into executive session is to discuss strategy with respect to the litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares Jeremy Benato versus Town or Free Town Highway Department. And number three, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator David Demage. And number four, to contact negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator David Demage. I'll entertain that motion.
Make a motion, ma'am.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Gunwell?
Aye.
And Ms. Pacheco, yes. Okay, we have just returned to our February 3rd, 2020 Board of Selectments meeting from executive session. The next thing on the agenda is to, what time is it?
Five twelve.
Five thirty? You're on, okay. So, we have a meeting at, well, not a meeting, but we have something on the agenda at five thirty. We're gonna skip that because it's not five thirty yet, so right now we're gonna go to award the bid and sign the agreement with the Industrial Communications for the construction of the tower at the new police station. Do I have a motion to approve and sign?
Could I just interject a few things?
Yeah.
I did have a discussion today with Chris at Industrial, Chris Mitchell at Industrial Communications. We are still putting together certain pieces of the contract. I believe that the board should vote to endorse the contract, but just subject to all of those pieces falling into place. One is a performance bond and a payment bond. Two, agreement on the final end of construction date. We did have a pretty lengthy discussion about the timeline in terms of ordering the steel, having the design plans, the engineers approve the design plans, the drawings, the time it's gonna take to get the tower up here, the time it's gonna take to actually construct the tower. They're looking to put the footings in first, so that'll be like six weeks prior too. It's gonna be really close, just to let you know, in terms of probably looking at June, the end of June, final completion of the tower. Just so the board is going into it with an understanding that it's gonna be late June, early July, which the timing of it, I actually think is, is pretty good if it all comes together and we're able to get the purchase order in on the steel and get the project moving. The other thing that came up was on the insurances. The original proposal that was the RFQ required products coverage that was in effect for three years. We did contact the vendor, the vendor did say, actually, the requirement, I take that back, came out of my, our insurance representative. They had stipulated that that should be a part of it. The vendor informed us that they only renewed their insurance on an annual basis and that the three years would not be possible, they would cover for a full year. He did state that there is a one-year warranty on it. And if something should happen after the tower is constructed, we are also gonna have insurance on it at that point anyway. But, I just wanted to be upfront and let the board know that they're not gonna be able to provide that three-year products coverage and that, and hopefully that's agreeable to the board in that, that the contract would not have that provision in it.
But it does have the one-year warranty and then we will have insurance on it after that.
Yes.
And when we talked to the, the project manager, he said, as soon as you turn it on, you're gonna know whether it's gonna work or not.
Yeah, usually the first ice storm, and I actually talked to him a little about the whole ice situation. They're designed to accept up to three-quarters of an inch of ice, which is, it's designed to a certain specification for this area and that shouldn't even be a problem. And if anything happens, it's probably gonna happen in the first year, particularly mechanically or electronically, so. I would recommend the board vote to endorse the contract pending a successful negotiation of all of the outstanding issues that are currently at hand. The council did review the contract also, by the way.
Can we see the contract? I mean, I'm not too comfortable.
Uh, I'm gonna say this is a-
It's in, it's in here.
I'm not gonna read it now. It's in the part of your package?
Yeah, it's in the package, yep.
I've just got that today.
That'll be tab five.
Do they?
Tab five.
It doesn't have all the supporting documents in it, but-
The full contract's a hundred and seventy-seven pages, so. We didn't need most of it.
And this one, alright, there also is an attachment app which is gonna be, the perform, attachment is a performance bond and payment bond. That's pretty much the contract.
Again, just to reiterate that this, the cell tower in this company was already part of the initial bid. It does not, it doesn't have any monetary impotence on what's already been voted, so it's all part of the contract for the police station.
Did we ever vote? Did we vote?
No, we're waiting. He just wants to look it over.
Why are you waiting?
Yes, sir?
I thought you were negotiating to have somebody put in the tower, if I'm right.
That didn't work.
Didn't work out?
Nope, because they wanted us to lease the tower from them. And then, we would lease it for a certain amount of money per month and then they would reap whatever cell carriers went on that tower. So, in the long run, it will have placements for three carriers on there and then in the long run, we'll get the rent from those cell carriers.
Once the tower is up, we actually had made a provision for a co-locator's attachment to it. So, once the tower is up, it's functioning, maybe a year down the road, we can put an RFQ out to all of the communications companies and see if there's interest there to lease on our tower, so.
It just didn't make sense. It's our land, we're not, you know what I mean? We're gonna lease our own land? Didn't make sense, so. You're all set? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to endorse pending successful contract negotiations.
Make a motion, ma'am.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Did you have a question?
No, I said, I think Charlie's trying to speak, but you said-
Oh, I can't see behind-
I've seen it over and over, but I don't hear anything.
I don't know what that line is that's across my eyes. My phone's showing me fine, so. Must be some demon out there.
Alright. Okay, next thing on the agenda is elimination of farm animal excise tax. This is on here again because we didn't come to any resolution the last time. David, do you wanna speak to it, or?
I have nothing more to add. We, we had put it on there because we had been informed by the assessors that they haven't required the tax to be paid since, I believe, nineteen sixty-three. And at this point, they, it's their desire to diseliminate the tax. They don't feel as though it's enough of a generator, I don't know how much it would generate, but that is not sufficient enough to keep, keep it on our books. I believe it will also require, not a bylaw, but a town meeting vote.
Well, I'm not comfortable with this. I mean, just because we haven't been taxing whatever farm animals are supposed to be taxed, so we haven't done our job, is the way I look at it. And we're taxing people that have a dog. And I'm assuming this is a farm animal, so this is income property.
It would be a working farm, I would imagine, with kids, cattle.
How many, I don't know how many working farms we have in town, I know at least one. And if these animals need to be taxed, I think they should be taxed. And just because we haven't done it, we haven't done our job, so we're just gonna-
So, can we, I think the last time we were here, we wanted to find out if there were any farms in town that would require this farm animal excise tax. And I think that we have not, I believe that that's what we, the direction we wanted to go in. Before we eliminate something, we wanted to make sure that there was nothing on the books that we could foresee taxing. And I think that there's only, I know, you might have known, I know one too. But I, I think there's a criteria about how big the farm has to be before you can start taxing them. So, I think that that would be a question too, like, what are the parameters of the farm animal excise tax? And do we have any one that meets those qualifications? And should we change those qualifications moving forward? Okay? Charlie, you are right with that?
Alright, my only thing is, as David said, we are just voting, basically, we're just voting to allow this to go on the town meeting. I think this is the first step to allowing it to go on the town meeting. You know, I do know that they have an assessment tax, so ninety-three. I don't know if you, maybe, I don't have an objection to see what the cost would be or not be. I'm, I'm kinda thinking that it might be that the cost to assess, to praise and assess the value of the animals might be more than we would get back from taxes, but I don't have an issue with getting the answer to the meeting.
Yeah, I-
I can get the questions, answers to those questions.
Okay.
The, when the assessors were in here, I believe two weeks ago, and this matter was brought up, I believe it was a six-dollar per head, per annum tax. They talked about all livestock, chickens and-
We weren't sure though how many, is there a criteria?
And I'd like to give the board a couple of photos that I can sign somebody to take and you can determine whether that's commercial or not. And those are photos within a one-mile radius of my location. It's not that hard to determine, you know, size. And if a, if a property, I just look at it from the perspective that if a property is receiving a benefit of a sixty-one A tax exemption, an agricultural exemption, for livestock, then we're already subsidizing these operations and this is a further subsidy. I mean, if somebody has two cows in the backyard, I can understand, but, but if it's a sixty-one A property which is already subsidized, why are we, why are the townspeople who don't get any benefit from the raising of livestock further subsidizing these, these properties?
I agree. I, I mean, I think that it's worthy to look into and we can put it back on the agenda for the next meeting as long as we have-
We'll get answers.
Okay.
Alright, I wasn't aware of the questions that happened, what the nature of the questions were.
Alright. Just, is there a criteria, like, is there a certain amount of animals that you have to have before you stop taxing them? What is that criteria? How do you assess them? I think that those-
Is it a commercial operation?
Mm-hmm. Right. Are they selling the meat, the byproducts, the eggs? I think that those are all valid, valid concerns and questions. Okay. Thank you. The next thing on the agenda is a one-year extension to the agreement with Lakeville Community Access Media, Lake Cam.
Okay, Charlie and I have, had spoken via a conference call with Jose at Lake Cam. They agreed to hold their price for the upcoming year to the previous amount that was charged. We did not discuss entering into a multiple-year contract only because we are in the beginning stages of negotiating a renewal with Comcast, which will be, need to be finalized by the end of October. So, we have done a survey, we, I've actually talked to council about a business plan that needs to be developed and we desperately need a third member on the committee. Right now, we can't even meet because we only have two members and it really needs three members to be effective and to be a legitimate committee. So, you know, my appeal would be, you know, if anybody would like to become a member of the cable advisory committee, we'd greatly appreciate your support. And number two, that we just enter into this contract for one year knowing that it could be renewed or knowing that the Comcast negotiations may take up some of that, that function, so. So, my recommendation would be to renew the contract for one year as an extension.
Do you have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Minutes of January twenty-first and January twenty-second. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
Aye, I'll second that.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Town administrators' report?
Alright, let me, I've got a couple things. We did get a change order in, number six, from the architect relative to the sprinklers. And he's looking for the board to approve those. It just came in, you know, relatively, a short period, it actually came in last Thursday night. So, it didn't end up on the agenda, but I think it's enough of an emergency that the board should consider approving it so that we can move it forward.
So, this change order is because in the attic section of the backside where there's an overhang, there wasn't sufficient fire suppression or sprinklers over there. So, this is just an increase to have them connect to the rest of the sprinkler system instead of putting in a separate sprinkler system and getting the coverage that is needed. So, this is not a want, this is actually a need. And, I don't have the amount.
It is-
Fourteen? Okay. The amount of the change order, and this did go to the committee and it was approved by the police station subcommittee. The amount of the change order is fourteen thousand, three hundred, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents.
And that is just to-
I'll make a motion.
That is just to add?
The necessary coverage of sprinklers and to connect to the rest of the police station for the attic.
Do we know how much space we're to put a whole attic?
The backside of the attic. I'm sorry. I thought there was a question.
Yeah, I thought somebody was saying something, but, okay, no, it's fine.
We still have a pretty sizable contingency. I don't have the number in front of me, but it's pretty sizable and we're, we're in good shape, so. So, Charlie made a motion. Did you second? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else, David?
I have, I was, have talked to Town Council Mark Rich regarding our, the petitioned article that had been proposed by the residents of Long Pond relative to the creation of the Lake District. And Mark has been contacted by their council for input. Specifically, I think that the, the notion is that the, the actual way the petition is written, it doesn't really spell out how the district is gonna be created, what the membership's gonna be, how the taxes are gonna be collected, who's, and the mechanics of it. And in the, in, in the past, I know that other towns that I've worked in, when it's a petitioned article, they generally allow the petitioner to bear the full cost and responsibility of doing that research. And I'm just checking with the board because I'm making you aware that was an inquiry from the group to the town, into town council to wanna work with town council. And I don't know if we wanna be incurring that expense, I guess. I'm just feeling you out, I just, you know, I just don't want it to come up to the meeting and then three days before say, hey, you know, let's try to put something together for them. It's a petitioner's responsibility to basically defend the article and to provide the parameters for the district that they're trying to create. And I would think that that would be something that would have to be addressed on the town meeting floor.
I think that we all have a litany of questions. I do, I'm sure you do. Charlie, you have questions as well?
Well, to address it, I believe that it's up to the petitioner to have the article muster. And I, we have spoken to him in the past about this type of issue and so he's aware of it. So, I, I think that this is a private petition and it floats or it sinks on its own, so to speak. Bad pun, maybe, but, oh, that's my opinion.
So, the-
I think the other question really have is whether the petition in itself and the board lending the services of town council prejudices the town's position regarding the petition itself and whether the board or the town feels for or against it. I think there's a real concern about that.
Just to let everybody in the audience know and whoever watches this meeting, we have a meeting with the Lakeville Board of Selectment.
Mom! Mommy! Mommy!
Yep, sorry. So, we have a Board of Selectments meeting in Lakeville at their new police station next Monday at five?
Thirty.
Thirty. Because we don't know where Lakeville is on all of this. I did have a chance to talk to the Lakeville Chair and she had attended a pond complex meeting because it's not just about Free Town in Lakeville. It also, like I tried to say the other time, it's Middleborough, it's everybody down pond from there. So, she did have a conversation with Senator Rodrick's, he has put money aside. So, you know, we'll find out more from her on this, but I, I don't know, I don't think that they are feeling any more secure and have a lot of questions just like we do. So, we'll be able to find out some of those answers on Monday.
Do we know of any other similar situations throughout the state?
I think David alluded that you knew other towns, right, that went through this, or?
I'm not aware of any. I know that I have a boat and it's on a lake and they had made mention at one point that that lake was under a district and I know for a fact it isn't, so. That was the only thing that I had relative to that. I've never been in a community that had either a fire district or a lake district.
I just, I feel like it would turn into the haves and the have-nots. Like, I feel like if you live on the pond, you can use the water, but if you don't live on the pond, you can't use the water. And then, where is the control from? Are like, are members gonna be equal members of Lakeville? I ask like what the charter is, like what are their rules and regulations and how do we, if, if Auntie M can't afford to pay the taxes, the additional taxes, then she can never use the pond again? I, I don't know how.
So, usually what would happen, they put a lien on the property and that, that lien would stay on the property until, generally, until such time that the property was sold and the new buyer would then pay off the lien as part of the transaction. And then they would start the whole process over again, either they pay the assessment or they don't pay, so that was-
Do we have a copy of the charter?
I asked for one, they don't have any.
Oh.
There's a lot of mechanics, you know, how it's gonna operate, that haven't been answered. And the whole idea of the ramp, we talked about the ramp, you know, are we gonna have control there? They're gonna have control of the ramp, that, you know?
And where does that money go to?
Yeah.
And we're gonna be putting in kiosks, right, we're gonna be paying for kiosks, but then they're gonna collect the money? I don't, so there's a lot of, right, exactly.
Yeah, and who's gonna do the billing?
Well, the thing is, you're gonna make the, they're gonna make the tax, they're gonna make people who live on the pond pay for the cleanup. But yet, you still have the town beach open to everybody else can come in and use the pond that didn't pay for it. So, how does that work?
Well, I, and I think, and I don't wanna speak for them 'cause I have not, they did say this one time, that people have their boats and they come in from other places and they don't clean their boats well. So, it could stop the weeds to grow and blah, blah, blah. I understand all of that, but we can't control who goes on the pond. I mean, the pond is an open area that we all want to be able to use at any time, we wanna be able to use it. And to say you can't go on the pond is, I don't necessarily think that that's fair. Like, I don't think it should be inclusive, like I said in the beginning, it's the haves and the have-nots and I don't, I don't like that concept, so. Ma'am?
I heard rumors, so I don't know if they're correct or not, but it seems that I had heard that there was gonna be like a fifty-dollar charge to go down to the boat ramp. Is that correct?
I don't know.
Not from this board, no. No.
Everything is rumor and hearsay at this point.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I, this is what I heard, so I'm asking, you know, is that, yeah, because that would be really a hardship. I mean, to think that to put your boat in water on a Sunday afternoon, you know, that it would cost us fifty dollars to go down and use it. If that's the case, I don't know.
Well, the problem is, we don't know any of the answers to those types of questions.
But this board has not increased the fees, so whatever the fees were last year, and I, I don't know off the top of my head, we have not increased the fees to use the boat ramp over there. So, I, that's just, if that's out there, that's maybe-
No, I mean, if this happened, if, if you were to have this group come in, that these are some of the changes that we might see.
Possibly, but that wouldn't be from this board and those are some of the questions that we have. You're welcome.
And also, on February fifteenth, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's voting day.
Yep.
And we don't have a lot of our answers, our questions answered.
So-
How are we supposed to vote against something that we, a lot, I, I live right next down the street from the guy and I pulled him outside last time, we had two meetings ago, I wanna say now. There was a lot of stuff that was not answered due February, you know, February fifteenth, we're gonna have this vote. But, my mother doesn't know, people that are actually are getting affected, a lot of them don't even know. I've had a lot of people, even on Free Towners, there's, there's a lot of questions that are not answered that needs to happen, I would say, before voting.
Agree. I totally agree. So, one of the things that we're definitely gonna do is make sure that we get the one call out and let people know that there's definitely a town meeting. I have seen signs, the vote yes signs, I have seen some of those signs already out there. I do stalk Free Towners occasionally, let it be known. I use my real name, let it be known. But, there is like a subliminal message within Free Towners, like, you know, how beautiful the pond is. It is, it is a beautiful pond, but we all should be able to use it. And I, you know, we are gonna try to get the word out as best we can, but it's, it's their petition, right? They're gonna get their people there and I've been trying to talk to my people and I'm sure George is doing the same thing and Charlie-
Is it, was it just for the, the voting is just for the people that are gonna be affected?
No, it's for the town of Free Town. This, this will have, this is for the town of Free Town, so-
So, maybe we should try to-
Every voter should go.
Yeah, okay.
And listen, because it will have an effect on all of us.
Okay.
Anything else to add, George?
Well, if you feel strongly about it, get some signs out there, get the word out.
Mm-hmm.
Charlie, anything to add?
No, no, um, it is what it is.
It is what it is. Alright, anything else on your police station update? I mean, anything else on your town administrator's report, sorry? 'Cause I'm gonna get to Wendy as soon as you're-
Alright, I, I'll go through really quick. I just wanted the board to be aware that we did get a grant jointly, regionally with the town of Lakeville in the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars through the Community Compact IT Grant Program. The purpose of the grant is to buy a scanner, but we're also gonna have a company come in and start scanning essential records and having a mechanism by which to store digitally important town records in, in a file and have redundancy. The software program will not only store them here, but it'll store them out in the cloud as well as a couple different other locations, so. The records, they'll have a hard copy, but you'll also have backup and redundancy in the process, so. That's a good thing and I just wanted the board to be aware of that and the townspeople to be aware of it that we're moving us into a new era of record keeping and I know that Jackie's extremely happy about it. I've also talked to the town of Lakeville, we've had some preliminary discussions about putting a grant application in for a shared town planner. And I'm just floating that balloon, so to speak, to see if that might be something that might be of interest. Decision doesn't have to be made tonight, but just to give you a heads up that it's something we could potentially look at, do it as a circuit rider the first year where it's probably, you know, X amount of dollars is paid and then it decreases over a period of time with both communities sharing the professional services of a town planner. They're interested in doing it, they brought that to me. Um, we also, um, I met with um, the planner, um, the building inspector, with Lisa Sullivan, who is the Green Communities Director. And with uh, Eric Arbean, who's with Serp Ed, we did apply for a grant uh, from Serp Ed back in uh, the fall uh, to uh, begin the steps of the town becoming a green community. And uh, one of the issues that has everybody uh, that I've heard objections about are, are potential uh, items that could cause uh, people concern is the stretch code. And how the stretch code affects uh, individual homeowners. And um, the uh, I'm gonna have uh, in, on the beginning of February, the first meeting in February, I'm gonna have an expert uh, come in uh, from uh, Lisa Sullivan's office to give you an overview of the stretch code and what it is. And how it pretty much at this point mirrors the state building code, so there's really no uh, impact on new construction. Doesn't affect additions, doesn't affect rehab. Um, it's strictly new construction residential and new construction industrial. So they will address all the issues and concerns that uh, the town may have and hopefully will answer some of the questions. It's important to note that two hundred and seventy-eight communities out of three hundred and fifty-one communities in the Commonwealth now are green communities. And that uh, by becoming a green community, we're guaranteed at least the first year, a minimum of grant of a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, and talking to Lisa, she feels that that could even be higher than that, somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred fifty thousand dollars to address energy concerns in our buildings, to assist the, the schools with the boiler issues, because that was made mention of during our regional finance committee meeting. And uh, just as a resource, and, and that, over an annual period now, I know the town of Lakeville has been a green community uh, since two thousand thirteen, they've gotten over eight hundred thousand dollars in grants to do all kinds of envi- um, energy uh, initiatives in the community. And that, not only are they making those changes with the, the state's money, but the cost that they're saving by affecting those changes is substantial also. So um, I'm just letting the board know that I'd like to have um, um, Lisa's uh, expert come in on, uh, March second and, and talk to the board about the stretch code.
I'd like Jeff to be there at that meeting as well, then?
It's gonna be a board meeting, that's why I'm suggesting it.
Jeff Chandler. Our building, right?
No, it's gonna be, I, I was gonna have that person come into the Board of Selectmen and give an overview of the stretch code and the green community program.
Right, but I would like our building to inspector to be at that meeting as well.
Yes, he will be. Um, Free Town Screw update, uh, I've had some discussions with Serp Ed about that. Um, I am going, we have a, a five thousand dollar um, amount or balance in the MVP grant. Uh, I have uh, been talking to Serp Ed about that. Uh, we can transfer that money over to do what's called a wetlands delineation on the Acushnet parcel. I'm gonna pursue that uh, with Serp Ed and uh, get an idea specifically in terms of doing some test borings over there and see what's on that parcel land before we actually agree to take it. Um, the, uh, just the final thing is, uh, I'm in process now doing the budget review with all the department heads. I have actually, I have Kim actively involved in it also this year, so that we uh, uh, are putting our heads together to take a look at everybody's individual budgets and see areas, see if there are areas where we can reduce the budget, so.
Okay.
That's it.
Charlie, any questions?
No, I heard it, I'm good.
Okay, Charlie, uh, George, question? Wendy? Oh, and friends.
Thank you very much for squeezing us onto your packed agenda, appreciate it.
Thanks, no worries.
For anybody who doesn't know who I am, I'm Wendy Gasha, President of South Coast Neighbors United, group that fought uh, and was victorious against the LNG and pipeline uh, proposal in our communities. Um, and we have now undertaken another campaign um, that does affect our community. It is a proposal by a company called Parallel Products that has moved from Shawman Avenue Bedford to the Business Park in the north end of New Bedford on Duchene Boulevard, right off of um, exit seven off of one forty.
What is the name of the company again?
Parallel Products of New England.
Parallel?
Yep, um, in, on Shawman Avenue Bedford, they operated a glass recycling company. Um, they've moved and they're expanding, and what they're proposing is very different than what they've been operating so far. Um, and so Tracy Wallace, she is a mem- she is a resident of the north end of New Bedford, living in that area. Reached out to South Coast Neighbors United um, to find out our stance on the, on the project. She learned a lot of information about it, proposed it to us, joined our board, and we have now undertaken this campaign. And so we're going around to the bordering communities to make sure that everybody's aware of this project and the detrimental impacts it'll have on our communities and, and in the area. Um, because the problems that it will present will not be isolated to just the Business Park of New Bedford.
But is the product there?
So, well, Tracy's gonna speak a little bit more about the, the meat and potatoes of it, because she knows a lot more about the project itself. And so this is Tracy Wallace, and she'll share that information.
Yes, thank you Wendy, um, thank you for um, letting us come in and, and speak tonight. Um, like Wendy had said, I reached out to her about a year ago when I had heard about a company coming into the Business Park. Um, they're gonna be located at the old Polaroid site, which is one hundred Duchene. Um, that site has been known to have had significant pollution um, occur on it over the last probably several decades. Um, this company had gained entrance into the Business Park by the city of New Bedford. Um, they proposed a glass recyc- recycling facility, which um, they have started processing. Um, then they modified site plan for um, a waste facility. And they're on over seventy acres. And they sent in a document to the Massachusetts Environmental Protection Act Office, MIPA, for um, for approval for basically their phase one would be glass recycling, solar canopy and side um, s- rail spur from the, the tracks that go behind the, the Business Park. And then phase two is going to be an MSW, which is, which is municipal solid waste, and CND, which is construction demolition, and biosolids. Biosolids is human waste, is sludge, that you basically dry in some sort of fashion, whether it's through thermal oxidation or gasification. Um, and then basically sell it off as fertilizer or send it to landfill. Um, the communities in Boston are taking their sludge from Deer Island and sending it to Quincy to have it made into biosolids, and that company is selling it as fertilizer. This fertilizer is, has been being sold since the mid to late nineties. It is on parks, it is on forest areas, um, it is on farmland. So it is of concern because of the um, high, high quantities of PFAS, which are now being found. PFAS are forever chemicals that are now of great concern um, to the EPA, to um, a lot of different states. Um, the facility in Quincy was found to have eighteen thousand parts per trillion of three PFAS chemicals. The US Environmental Protection Agency recommends that municipalities alert the public if two of the most common chemicals add up to seventy parts per trillion. And this had eighteen thousand parts per trillion. Uh, Massachusetts uses those same levels for five PFAS chemicals. So this proposes, poses a, a significant health risk. Um, by drying these biosolids, about fifty-two thousand gallons of discharge will be put into the New Bedford sewer system and go to the treatment plant. Um, there is concern of um, stormwater runoff, things like that, of contamination of the Acushnet Cedar Swamp um, and surrounding water areas. Um, the city of New Bedford did hire an independent law firm to oppose this project. The mayor is on opposition to this project, and the city council is oper- in opposition to this project. Um, the draft environmental impact report, which was parallel, one of Parallel Products' first initial permitting or approval phases to obtain. Um, they submitted that draft environmental impact report, that commenting period has just ended. And the Secretary of Environmental Affairs, Energy and Environmental Affairs, has given the approval for that certificate. So what that means is, the company now has to put forth an environmental, a final environmental impact report, which will, there will be another commenting period on that. So once that is put in, there's more commenting, there's several approvals and permits in which this project has to obtain. Once it obtains full NEPA approval, it will then go to the Mass DEP. And then after site suitability, it will then go to the city of New Bedford further. Um, so what we're asking today is that um, you'll join us in opposition to this project. Not only does it um, present environmental impacts, but it also is going to impact air quality. It's going to impact
Lifestyle.
Lifestyle.
Values.
Thank you, property value. Um, they're projecting about, they're varying their numbers in terms of trucks. Originally, it was over four hundred trucks
Per day.
Per day, truck trips per day. Um, now it's at about three hundred truck trips per day. Um, I'm sure you are all familiar with exit seven. To handle that kind of, of truck increase in traffic is going to be extreme. They could find different backroads that could affect Free Town.
They could go through backroads to Free Town, they come off Route Four.
Yeah, so um, they're going to use um, ionization systems to control for odor. So these ionization systems can be harmful, they can be damaging to lungs, chest, coughing, shortness of breath, et cetera. The trucks are going to carry sewage sludge in, in two different ways, in liquid sludge and in dried cakes. These dried cake trucks were going to be open air trucks. The company has now come back and said that they will be covered trucks. Well, does covered mean with a tarp over the top, blowing around?
Covered doesn't mean enclosed.
So what, what does that mean? Does that mean enclosed? Um, so there are a lot of, a lot of questions. The Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs did um, in her approval, give eight pages worth of um, findings in which they have to address. So there's a significant amount of information that they have to address. Um, that covers contamination of water systems, air quality, et cetera. Um, but it does pose a significant threat to to the surrounding communities, not just to New Bedford, but to really all of the south coast. This is going to be a massive operation, and I think once people know what the operation is, no one is going to want to be living within twenty-five miles of it. Um, they always say that there is a significant waste problem, that we're in a waste crisis in the state of Massachusetts and, in the country. But if the Mass DEP were to just enforce the regulations they have currently, we could see a reduction of waste by about forty percent. So our argument is why do you keep building more waste facilities? Correct. To take care of the problem rather than addressing the waste production itself? Right, right, stop it. So there, the um, the site in Rochester has now gone um, for um, an amendment to increase their tonnage per day of municipal solid waste. And then there is a site in Taunton, which actually wasn't supposed to be deemed for solid waste in the Miles Standish Industrial Park, that has now put forth a site amendment for um, one thousand tonne per, tons per day of MSW. So now if you're having one in Taunton, you've got one in Rochester, and now you've got a third in, in the Business Park in, in New Bedford, well, now you've got three locations within a twenty-five mile triangle of one, of one another, all in the south coast. It's, it seems like this area is being burdened disproportionately um, and at the detriment of, of the people that, that live here.
Um, I put together some packages with additional information that could be helpful.
Thank you.
Yep. I'll leave extra on for Charlie. Um, the town of Acushnet has joined in the opposition, city of New Bedford is against this project. Um, we will be also going to Dartmouth, because these, all these towns have bought that property. Um, so residents in those towns will be impacted by it. Um, so if, if you're able to vote and agree to take an opposition stance with us and, and support our campaign, all we'd ask is some action items as they go through the permitting process of submitting letters expressing the concerns that you have and how it will affect the, the residents. That's pretty much it. We've, we've, we've missed the, the draft environmental um, impact report commenting period, but there'll be a final one for, for MIPA. And then so forth and so on. The um, the permitting process, the timeline is in there as well.
Okay, that, that was one of my questions.
There's a letter in there from Senator Montigny in opposition of the project, there's a le- a letter in there, how many pages, eight pages? From KP Law, hired by city, the city of New Bedford, against the project, outlining all of their ma- major concerns about it. Um, there's articles in there talking about biosolids, um, and how it impacts neighborhoods in other areas where they're already op- operating. There is articles in there about PFAS and how dangerous those are, um, and the fi- the thing, the findings they're, they're coming to. Um, they've shut down farms in Maine where they've been using that, the fertilizer that, that the company Quincy's been selling for thirty years.
Yeah, they can't sell their milk anymore, there's a farm out in Maine.
So I have a couple of questions for you. Um, the other businesses in the area, have they written letters of opposition as well?
I'm not sure on that. Um, I have heard that I don't, I think it might be in KP Law's um,
Letter.
Letter that they submitted, that's in your packet, that does state that the companies within the Business Park are concerned. Um, I have been told that a lot of the companies tend to st- stay out of the other companies' businesses, um, and so forth. So I'm not sure if, how comfortable those companies are in taking a stand against this one. I'm hopeful that we can gain their support um, fully on record, so that, that would be something in the future to, to do.
Right, and um, do you know, how big is this facility, or is that in here too?
Um, so the very first page is a fact sheet that we actually put together that explains a lot of the, the, the specifics about the project. Does it say how big though? It might even be in one of the letters.
So the project will be um, constructed in two phases. Phase one includes construction of a twenty-seven thousand five hundred square foot building for glass recycling and processing and a twenty-three thousand square foot bunker building attached to the north side of the new glass rec- recycling. Then a twenty-two thousand eight hundred square foot side bunker building. Um, it will occupy approximately fifty thousand square foot portion of an existing ninety-two thousand square foot building. Um, so it sounds pretty big.
Yeah, it does. Um, and have you, do you know what the process and how the process works? Because um, being involved in some of the new process, sort of manufacturing things around here, um, we've grown to uh, ask a lot of questions about how processes work.
She's the one who-
What is the air, I mean, what is the standard air quality after that? Are those things, and really just a word of wisdom, um, you need to get on DEP from day one. You cannot wait until DEP gives them a go letter.
Right, right, that's understood, we've, I've actually already been at a meeting with Mass DEP in the beginning of December. Um, so they've actually put forth comments of concern about this project as well, for the company to address.
Um, so, do you have any questions, George?
Oh, this is just scary.
Yeah. Uh, Charlie, do you have any questions?
I know, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, so um, Tim, can you put on the next agenda for us to vote um, on a letter of opposition?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then we can go from there. Um, we only had a presentation from you tonight, so um, I wouldn't wanna be against opening meeting law, so we'll cer- certainly put it on for the next one. And um, maybe we can reach out to, we have KP Law as well. Maybe we can snag one of those letters from them and use that as our opposition letter.
Mark, Mark Rich is the one that wrote that one.
Then he'll be very easy to text tomorrow to find out, perfect.
And if you have any questions, you have my email.
I do.
You can reach out to me, I can give you Tracy's if you need.
Does anybody in the audience have any questions for them?
I have a suggestion for the board, to, so the board isn't uh, the-
So the board isn't, uh, the three board members aren't unilaterally deciding to oppose this project. Possibly circulate a petition in town for and against, leave it open for whether it's two weeks or a month. I'm sure that more people are gonna sign the petition that are opposed to it and go out of their way to sign the petition that they're for it, and then the board will then be representing the townspeople and not opening us up to, I don't know, potential litigation, because it seems that, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna oppose something, I wouldn't want the board to oppose something based on the board's sole discretion. And if the townspeople supported the board, then the board has grounds, has footing to oppose it.
I, I, I hear you, and I hear you.
You understand my concern.
I hear you, um, but we've done a letter of opposition to the LNG as well, um, because other communities were doing the same thing. If we don't do a letter of opposition and they don't get their footing in the ground, I don't want them coming to our town. And that's my fear. And I think we can do both, I think we can put a petition at all of the, the stores, you know, for people to go in and sign it. But I think we know what we want in town as a business, and I don't see us wanting this kind of business. We already have two headaches, one ongoing, one coming.
I'm opposed to it.
Okay, I, I, I hear you. So let's do both. I think we can do both, and I think that if you do have people that sign the petition, then that just, I think that gives you another.
We have a petition.
Perfect. Um, so we'll put it on for the next agenda, and I think that if we can do both, I think that's cool.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Cause all I, all I can envision is, um, New Bedford says no, and they come not, yeah, right. And not, maybe not on the East Free Town side, but where the other problem is on the Asona side, and that's not. That would be a nightmare. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to you, security cameras at the Free Town St- Transfer Station.
Oh, we're, uh, holding it off until we get specs.
Okay. All right, um, and then, uh, memorandum of agreement with town administrator, um, regarding the salary rec- uh, his two percent, um, cost of living increase, um, we just have to sign that. Do you have a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement?
Motion, yeah.
Do you have a second?
Okay, uh, we're on the, uh, town highway, correct?
No. No.
Cause I, you're, you're fading out a little bit.
Oh, sorry, we're just, we're signing the memorandum of agreement with David.
Right, okay.
So George made the motion. You're gonna second it or not?
Okay, where, I, I'm a little, uh.
What we, what we voted on upstairs has to be done in open session, so that's what we're voting on.
So we're voting on the, the agreement between the town and the town employees, is that it?
No, David.
No.
Just David.
David.
Can you hear me, sorry? The one that we voted on upstairs, the.
Right, okay. Uh, okay, I, I, I get it now.
Okay.
I'll make that second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, the memorandum of agreement with the town employees regarding sick time, that's on hold. The memorandum of agreement with, um, the collective barding highway, that is on hold. Um, so moving right along, letter of resignation from the library director Dorothy.
Stanley Valley.
Yes, I was just looking for that.
Okay.
I don't have it, so, wait, my computer died. Um, anyway.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Um, so this letter of resignation would be effective, um, July second, twenty twenty. She is really retiring, but it's a letter of resignation. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion, yeah.
I'll make the motion.
Uh, George already made it, do you wanna second it?
Okay, I'll second it then.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, and then, um, appointment of Douglas Munjin as a reserve police officer, effective February third, twenty twenty.
Motion, yeah.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, and then appointment of Katrina Gonzalez, um, as temporary clerk for the Conservation Commission at the rate of sixteen. Twenty. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, that's it, anything else? All right, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion, yeah.
Do you have a second?
Motion seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye, Charlie.